Time is 6:30 and we'll call the regular Charles City Community School District Board of Education meeting to order and have roll call, please.
Dyte.
Present.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee.
May Cumber.
Here.
Winterink absent.
Four board members are present. Agenda item one is approval of the agenda. I believe there's some changes that people would like to make.
I was hoping to move seven ahead of six.
And Dr. Cox?
I would ask that we move thirteen up to that same timeframe, six and seven.
After.
After number seven.
So after number.
The athletic complex became number six. Gym and locker room was seven. That the alumni activity pass would then be eight. So the A D is here for both at the same time.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended, corrected. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Dyte.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Frisbee.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero. Number two is welcome the visitors and public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I will invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the board to complete the full agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we, as a board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa's sunshine law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school districts. Are there any comments from the public tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item three, comments by board members and superintendent. Dr. Cox?
Thank you. There were thirty-five superintendents and district leaders at the Harvard Leadership Institute for Superintendents that I attended two weeks ago. Faculty from the Graduate School of Education, the Harvard Kennedy School of Government, and the Harvard Business School served as instructors. I brought back some new insights for our systemic reform and innovation efforts, especially in the areas of resources, family and school partnerships, and evidence-based educational leadership. Want to congratulate the twenty-three CCHS students who will be inducted into the National Honor Society tomorrow night. Ceremony is at 7:30 and it's at Comet Gymnasium rather than the auditorium. So that is a change of location. Our final food service visit will be on Wednesday and we are headed up to Decorah. They've made some substantial changes to their program without using an outside provider, so we're anxious to go see what they've done with their lunch program. On Thursday evening, instead of watching the NCAAs, we've got a group going. The Charles City and the Howard Winnachy Teacher Leadership and Compensation System Committees are going to meet in Cresco to discuss a possible joint application for the 2016-17 school year. And finally, last fall, we started four laboratory classrooms as part of our Iowa Core Curriculum Implementation. I had the opportunity to visit Tori Muller's classroom right before spring break and I was really impressed at the mathematical thinking and the conversations her fourth-grade students were having with her, as well as with one another. It was really impressive, so I want to just say congratulations to her and the work that all of our lab classroom teachers are doing.
Thank you. Any board members have comments this evening?
I attended a meeting two weeks ago this Wednesday at the courthouse as representing the school board on hiring and setting the wage scale for the county auditor.
The assessor, you mean?
No, county assessor, excuse me. And they approved his wage increase at 2.89, same as the rest of the elected officials at the courthouse.
2.89.
Yep.
Thank you.
I forgot to bring the minutes of the first, because this was the second one, and I didn't bring the minutes with me to put in the school records, but I'll get them to you, to Dr. Cox or Terry.
All those extra things we do as board members take extra time, too, so thank you for doing that, Jim.
Also, on April fourteenth, I got a call today from First Security Bank to represent the school board on planning their, I can't even think of it, anyways, to give out their grant money for going to college.
Oh, scholarship committee, yeah. Very good.
I did that last year, too, and they called me today and wondered if I could. I said I would.
Very good. Any other comments by board members? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item four, Chosen Valley Agreement.
Do we have?
I don't see any.
I don't see Scott.
Estes.
Scott Scheller from Estes Construction was planning to be here. Do you want to come back to that later? He emailed and said he was going to be here.
Okay.
Revisit it?
Table is till later in the meeting if he shows up? Or just do it?
Do we need a motion to do that?
Terry?
No, you can.
We'll just skip that and come back to it if he arrives.
Public comment now, or I don't know for sure what procedure I'm talking?
Nope, we passed that. The public comment section?
No, for this agenda item specifically.
Oh, well, we aren't even talking about this point until he shows up, so we'll just wait. Agenda item five, Construction of First Avenue Project Agreement.
In your exhibits, you have the agreement for construction of First Avenue, actually between the city and the school district. What the city has proposed is that the district take care of the civil costs of the design and then the city would pay for the actual construction of First Avenue from L down to Park Street. We just needed from Highland to L, but they're going to go ahead and do the other two blocks all the way down to Park, as long as the cost comes in at no more than ten percent of what their city engineer believes should be the cost. So Terry and I placed a phone call today to Gene at BLDD just to double check, is that civil work actually part of what we already had going for the project? And it turns out the answer was no, so it would be about $20,000 to have that portion of it done. The actual construction of the road is probably somewhere in the $250,000 range. So that would be the school board's portion of this project. And administration would recommend that we go ahead with this agreement with the city.
Based upon the documents in our packet, it looks like we're going to move our driveway on the north end and pretty much be straight in line with L Street now?
Yes.
Compared to the offset we've had for years?
Correct. Which is something the city is interested in, having that intersection modified.
It does really clean that up nicely.
Right.
Any discussion?
I think it's a good opportunity.
Yes, I agree. I think it's a great opportunity. I think it's great that the city is willing to work with us and make that all possible. It's benefits both for the city and for us.
Right.
I guess because of the city sewer and water is already in there, they can do that for that kind of price, but I just can't believe that they can do two and a half blocks for $250,000, that they're going to come in with in budget. That's surprising that they could do it that reasonably, but maybe because the water and sewer are already there. Be interesting to see, anyway.
And probably because it'll be bid as a part of the larger project as an alternate, we can get a better price.
Get a better price on it because it'll be here, anyway.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the First Avenue Project Agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the First Avenue Project Agreement with the city. Any further discussion by the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero. Moving to the athletic complex agenda item.
On Thursday, I received an email from Terry McCarthy at SEH Yaggy, and you've got copies of that as well. And he provided some cost estimates as to what it would take to do the drawings for the planned unit development that the city would like us to follow as part of the zoning process for the athletic complex. So the cost is between $43,000 and $47,000 is the estimate to get the work done. There is still some additional work that would need to be finished before it was ready to go to bid. And in the $43,000 to $47,000 that's being anticipated, there's also possibility that it goes higher than that because the location of the ball fields may have to shift. We've got the overhead transmission lines, we've got the underground sewer lines, and based on the topography, they may have to move some things. May also have to expand the parking lot, given the maximum capacity that we have for the two baseball fields and the two softball fields and the city's formula for parking. The current plan is for 200 parking spaces, but it may need to go up to 333 at a minimum, given the maximum numbers of attendees, which would then shift where the parking lot is located and the access road to get to it. And what a fear is, is that the entry point and the second access point for emergency vehicles are going to end up right back to a bottleneck situation instead of being further apart as would be desired. Given all of that, given the fact that we have the middle school project going on, we have the First Avenue construction going on, we've got the Bus Barn project going on, we have the food service outsourcing going on, just as some big things. At this point, the board needs to consider, is it the right time to continue moving forward on this athletic complex, or is it time to cut back and narrow our focus, get some projects accomplished, and then revisit the topic of an athletic complex a year or two down the road? And that would be what I would recommend.
Yeah. Initially, when we looked at this property, my hope was that because of the location of this piece of property, it would become something that the school could acquire and some point in the future develop it, possibly ten years or so down the line. It's, to me now, has become too much of a development at this point. There's too many unforeseen things that could possibly happen. And you're right, too much time, too much effort at this point is becoming part of this project. I didn't foresee it becoming this much. It was just to purchase a piece of property, put it aside, develop it later on. With this development, I don't see how we can continue on spending the time we're spending. We definitely cannot spend the funds for what's needed.
Even, I guess my opinion would be, even if we had the $43,000 to $47,000 or $50,000 to spend for this planned development, I wouldn't vote to spend any money at this point in time because we don't have any money to actually build the development. And there has been no money come in for donations. So if we were to spend all of this spring and summer getting this planned development done and planned and approved by the city council, in five to 10 years, when the money comes in or is available to develop that, we may have different coaches, we may have different A D, you will probably have different board members and maybe even a different superintendent that will wonder, who were those crazy people that locked us into this planned development that we now have to do because that's what the city's approved? That's where I am.
Or they would spend the money to change the...
Or they'd spend another $50,000 to change it.
Yeah.
Or whatever, yeah. I'm in agreement with Robin. This, the entire initial plan was to purchase property, get it rezoned, and build later, not to do a detailed analysis and everything else of what would be there and what it would cost and what it would look like because we don't have any of that money, time, or resource.
By the time we would get done with this process to do the PUD, we wouldn't have funds to purchase the property.
Nope.
So we would defeat everything that we've moved around, set aside, we still wouldn't be, we would have nothing.
I agree. I, all along, had assumed this to be a simple process, so like you said, you know, we have the money in the bank, property for sale, intentions down the road of development, simply purchasing, stashing, developing when possible. That has become apparent, that's not possible. All along, I had put a premium on the location. You know, there's a dollar figure that is unknown, that the location is some sort of value there, and I thought that value outweighed a lot of these other things that we have had come up with it, that we've been working through. Now it's become apparent that these things have all certainly outweighed that value of the location. So I agree that it's probably time to move on.
It has become unattainable, in my view.
I agree.
Unfortunately.
Yes.
I agree.
Well, my opinion is, you know, we've had, we talked about doing this because the other field was flooding. Well, that's just like saying we should go out and build an art because it might flood again. It hadn't flooded for thirty-some years. And possibly with the cleaning of the ditch out there, the assessing of the pump, that the tile are going to take, maybe take this away from us and, you know, and get, like I told Dr. Cox this morning, maybe what we need to look at is getting the rest of that creek cleaned out because the water's going to seek its lowest level, which is the river. And maybe if it had a clean path to get there, it would go down faster than have to stumble around all the falling down trees and everything else in the creek bit. And I, nobody has rushed out there to make another offer on this property, so I'm not so sure that this property's going to disappear away from us in the next couple of years, anyway. And I think we're just going to have to run the risk of not having any more of these torrential floods and be able to play ball on our old field. The only alternative might be if we could spend a small amount of money and maybe and find an alternative field, which we'd looked at, out to Lyons Field, by spending a few dollars, making that the right size, is that correct?
Well...
We talked about it one time, I think.
The College Grounds was the first site mentioned and then some others were talked about as well.
I can't see us spending this $50,000, you know, to carry it further than we haven't even got a guarantee that the city's going to approve it then. And that $50,000 will pay a fifth to a sixth of the money we're going to be talking about in a little while to increase the size of our gymnasium. It's going to benefit a lot more people than the change in the ball diamond.
Well said.
Very good.
That's my thoughts.
Very good.
So are we prepared to make a motion?
I...
We did, at one point, we had made an offer on the property and the owner of that property has our deposit, well, the realtor has our deposit money in escrow. The seller has agreed to extend the purchase date to September 1, but doesn't sound like any of us are willing to move forward with that, so...
Can we get our deposit back?
Yep.
And do you want to act tonight? Do you want to act next Monday night when you have a full board and a little time to reflect on it?
Well, Lorraine called me an hour ago and that's the opinion that she voiced to me, just like I said when she called me an hour ago and said to make sure that we get that point across. That's what her thinking of it.
I've heard the same from her.
So is there a motion?
I move to release the property from our, or our intent to purchase of the property and seek our deposit back based on the fact that we're unable to meet the demands of the purchase agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to, you going to read that back, Terry?
Good luck.
She's got to put it in a minute, so we'll see how she's wording it.
Well, I might tomorrow reflect on it a little bit more, but...
Paraphrase.
To release the property that we were intending to purchase for the athletic complex and get our deposit back, basically.
Any discussion by the board?
Question.
Any comments by the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero. So Mr. Forsythe, I'm guessing you can go ahead and put up the scoreboard at Sportsman's Park for the baseball team when it's dry as soon as possible because it looks like we'll be there for a while. Agenda item, Possible Gym and Locker Room Revisions.
At the request of some coaches and administrators, we contacted Gene Underwood and BLDD about some revisions to the locker room areas and to the gymnasium to make it a little bit larger to accommodate the space needs for full-size courts going cross-court and to make some changes in the locker room area. Visited with the activities director and Todd, feel free to come up to the mic to address any questions the board may have.
Is it possible to get the drawings on the screen?
Sure.
Justin, can we get that?
If you go to the website, Exhibits, and pull that up.
The newest, the drawings we got, just for reference. Thank you.
So everybody can see at the same time.
While we appreciated the initial, or the revised drawing that Gene came up with, she took feedback and made some changes, it still doesn't meet the needs of the, of both P E and athletics.
What we see in these...
What we're seeing still needs some more revision. And so although it says on here that I would favor the concept if some private money can be raised to expand it because it's going to come at an expanded cost between $270,000 and $290,000, I don't want it to be approved without some more revision. And so Todd, if you'd like to speak to...
Just a few things. Safety is number one, and if you're looking at those cross courts, there's just three feet between the wall and the courts. And if you're talking high school kids using that gym for practices and stuff, I think that has to be the number one thing. Number two, I understand how they drew it. They put the locker rooms underneath the bleachers, and they did that to save on space and cost. But if you look at all the conference gyms that have been built recently, none of them have put their locker rooms underneath the bleachers so they could have more floor space. So I did talk to Gene about that today. Where would they, at least one set of the locker rooms move? I'm not sure, you know what I mean? But I think that would make a huge difference if we could move a set of locker rooms to give us more floor space, to give us more safety, to give us, it would help practices just tremendously.
The layout of the locker rooms is improved, like we talked today?
Yeah. There's, there was only like five showers in the original drawings and now they got seven. And I think it, it's adequate. If you go into most schools, locker rooms aren't big. All the school, all the new locker rooms, size isn't the issue, it's just location and where can you make them fit, I think. And she expanded a little bit, so we have seven showers in each of the different locker rooms. And I think we can make it work for four teams that come in. If you have an eight-team tournament, no one has enough locker rooms, you know what I mean? Everybody has to share, anyway. So they're adequate. Obviously, anytime we can make them bigger, we'll make them bigger, or could use the space. But right now, my biggest concern is the floor space on the gym.
Okay, let me ask a question. The new proposal to make it bigger like our present gym, when people are sitting in that front row, there's hardly room to walk in front of them to get down to the south end. So how much more space, if we widen this out and then use it for double courts, crossways, how much more space we going to have between the front row of bleachers and the...
Yeah, there has to be a lot more space.
Yeah, to walk down through there.
Every school I know of is putting in chairs for teams, so fans can walk behind the chairs instead of walking in front of the teams.
Okay.
Just for the flow of traffic, and that definitely has to be part of that.
You don't have room in this plan for that to happen at all.
No.
Because what, three foot, two and a half inches?
Yeah. I mean, Decorah, between their two side courts, they have 10 feet between the two courts, and the teams actually sit in the middle, so that way the bleachers come out and not walk in front of, again, in front of players and stuff, make the flow of traffic.
Well, how much, okay, how much space do you recommend that they have to get down through there? I mean, what'd you say, Scott, three feet right now?
Well, it's three foot, two and a half inches is what the current...
What, you need eight, 10 feet?
At least seven, minimum.
At least seven, on both sides?
Yeah.
Okay, so it'd be 14, 15 feet.
If we don't, if we don't, if we don't move the locker rooms, you know, that will be the key, is can we move the locker rooms? Because then that increases your floor space by 3,600 square feet, I think she told me, which would...
Which is space that's already there.
Yeah.
We just, yeah, we're not adding square footage, then we're just...
You're adding square footage to move your locker room somewhere.
Yeah, but possibly could be.
And how that affects phase two, you know what I mean, or location, I don't know. I think there'd have to be probably some adjustments.
There's several adjustments in phase two that still need to be made and...
Like the whole thing?
Yeah.
Like, yeah, I mean, there just are several moving parts to all of this, and so if we can move the locker rooms to the left-hand side of that drawing, for example, so they're just at one end, and utilize more of that space, as Todd's talking about, for the cross-court, to make it a safer, more usable environment, we know that when phase two comes in, some changes are going to have to take place, and they'll just work around that to make it all fit.
If we wanted to rotate the cross courts so they're going the same direction, how many more square feet do we need for feasible?
That is a good question. Decorah does do it that way. All their courts run the same direction.
To me, the seating would be more, because the curtain would then run down the middle and you'd have all that seating, so you'd have seating on both ends of the court on either side.
They can actually run three volleyball courts in the same direction. And they pull out, I think you said four, they can pull out four or five rows of bleachers on each side, so there's not a lot of seating if there's three nets.
Right.
But for a tournament...
Yes. So when I'm down in Omaha, I have a grandson that plays basketball, and we go to those and, yeah, there's not a lot of, you've got to get there.
Yeah.
Get your seat. But there is only three, actually, bleachers.
Rows, yeah.
That you pull out, and, but it works. And there's lots of teams playing at the same time.
Yeah.
With the curtain.
We had talked earlier today about upstairs and that you had thought, that maybe you talked to Gene, that they were, that they could potentially make that accessible from the second floor?
No, it's extremely cost prohibitive.
It is.
Yeah.
To run a, to run some, basically, you're running a bridge across the commons in order to get to the second story, almost, yeah.
It would cost a lot of money that you, that we just don't have to do that.
And steps, they say, are expensive as well, so...
Okay, but is there, under what I call the west side, which would be...
The top?
Is there locker rooms underneath those bleachers now?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, well, couldn't those bleachers, those locker rooms be shoved out under a lower roof, like a lean-to on against that wall on the outside and shove the lockers out?
They could, but that is the front side of the building when everything's done.
Front side of your... Changes the front side of your building.
Yeah, well, when State Shoe comes along, I think that there, the gymnasium was going to be put in there, wasn't it?
No, it was going to go to the south.
To the south, not the west?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'm looking at it from a different direction, so, okay.
But you could push that out to the, to the west, potentially to the east also, it interferes with what the current phase two plan is, but again, if that's going to change, not such a big deal. To the south, though, it would make more sense, because if another gym is going to hook a smaller gym on that, and a wrestling room on the other side, then your locker rooms are in the center, where they're easily accessible.
That seems to make a lot of sense.
You already have the water and utilities and everything between the two gyms, so utilize...
Because right, yeah, right now, they have it designated as storage and electrical and laundry currently, so...
Yeah.
There is a bump out there.
When Waverly built their two gyms, that's what they have, is they have the locker rooms between the two gyms.
Mm-hmm.
That's how they did theirs.
That makes sense to me.
That would make more sense.
Yeah, to put it in the middle, so you could get access on both sides.
So even at this, if you went the eight feet, six inches wider, you're gaining four feet on each side, you get seven, seven feet on the sidelines, right? And then, if you didn't pull out the, if the locker rooms didn't move, and you didn't pull out the bleachers to the west there, the top side of the picture, you only pulled those out four rows, you would gain space on the end lines potentially, right?
But then you don't have access to the balcony.
You don't, but you would have, excuse me, you'd have four rows of seating there at 60-ish seats per row, 240 seats, is that a...
One of the things we asked when we looked at...
Could you use the mic, please? Oh, sorry, we're on TV, and we want to make sure everybody can hear.
I can't re-listen to you if I can't hear you.
Thank you, one of the things we did ask, too, is offset the court, so one set of bleachers will be open and closed, so then it's not an issue either. So, and then, Jim, to answer your question, you're looking at, if you look at the, the vertical lines, which would be your left and right side, that's where you're less than three feet right now.
Mm-hmm.
That's where we need to get our space.
Right.
So we're on the same thing, so, if one set of bleachers was open and you offset the volleyball courts, you could still run your volleyball with one set completely open. That's what we're, are we saying the same thing? Okay.
Okay.
If the cross-courts went the same direction as the main court, and if the locker rooms were not underneath the bleachers, could you shove the, push the bleachers all the way back in and not have to expand east and west, is there enough space to accommodate all of your needs? And just push the locker rooms out to the south?
I, I tried to ask Gene that question, but I'm, I'm not sure that that will work, that there's enough space.
So...
She said, she told me there wasn't enough space, even if we pushed the locker rooms all the way in to run the same direction.
How much more, how many more feet would you need?
Don't know, can't answer that, I guess.
It can't be that much.
It can't.
It just cannot be more than a few feet.
You would think if these bleachers came all the way in, that from here to here...
Yeah, it looks like...
From there to there...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because earlier today, I was cutting and pasting these apart, and it's just barely...
It's got to be super close if it isn't.
That's something that needs to be investigated, I think.
Right.
Because...
Because then, you're right, if you had just a few bleachers pulled out, because you're going cross-court this direction, now you're not trying to sit at one end and watch away at the far end, you can actually watch it as a real game, even though not many bleachers are pulled out.
Not to mention, our entrance into the gym is here, you're going to have to cross somehow to get all the way, whereas you enter's in the middle, you can go to which court, with the curtain running down the middle, you go to the, to the east or the west court.
And three feet along that wall, to get to the bleachers, isn't going to be enough. A wheel, I mean, just, for example, a wheelchair's three feet wide, or you need that much space to get a wheelchair through.
If we turn, if we rotate the courts, though, if we rotate the courts...
Oh, then you're fine.
Then we're fine.
Yeah.
And could you get your three volleyball in that space like Decorum has? Or is it just a couple of feet difference, and then we could accomplish that?
How much is all of this necessary?
I wouldn't build it without changing it, otherwise, if you built what we have right now, it would, in my mind, it would be about the same size as what we currently have, and...
With status quo again.
Yeah.
Which isn't what anybody wants.
Right, and with gym space and moving the middle school kids up and needing more, I think the changes are necessary.
Well, I, I think if we can get the space that we need by increasing the cost of it by $290,000 or thereabouts, we'd be hating ourselves for a long time if we didn't do it now while we're building it.
Well, and we may need to spend more than that, because the 290 gets us this, and if we need to move locker rooms or do something different, you're going to add more cost, which is above and beyond our, Justin, we lost our screen.
Larry, just want to wiggle that pad, Todd?
So I've got power there.
The, the excess cost of the competition gym was what, originally a million?
Here, here's something else to consider, all of this space, I mean, this door can go away, because all of this can be seating.
Yep.
Just like this can be seating, and this can be seating, so...
Yep.
They may be able to shave off some of the rows of bleachers as it is.
I agree.
As you fill in those spaces, and that savings might help, or would help, offset the cost of pushing the locker rooms out into this area.
Well, I can't see where, personally, to the, look to the west, which I, which now I've figured out is the left wall, the left side of the picture.
That's the south.
If you come out there and move it...
That's the south.
That's the south, okay, well, if you move that down 10, 15 feet, and then come out and put a lean-to like on it for the locker rooms, that would be, wouldn't be a bad-looking building to have a, and then you, because it's going to be a block wall anyway, it would make a nice looking, would make a nice, to move it out 10 feet, give us the room, and then put the lockers outside of that yet, which we wouldn't have to go a whole two-story wall.
Correct.
And I, I don't think that that would be, I think that wouldn't be too bad looking to the structure of the building.
Lean-to probably isn't the right word.
No, not a...
Bump out or something else.
Which, which in the, which in the, they, they do now already have, it just doesn't go the full length, and it probably doesn't go out quite as far, because they do now, on the drawing from the last meeting, have the laundry, electrical, and a mechanical room that does go to the south. That just needs to get a few feet...
And it does make it bigger, and have...
Right.
Go the full length of the gym.
And to move that whole wall back 10 feet, it's not going to cost that much more.
Relocate the laundry and electrical underneath the bleachers and in the small room.
More as part of this locker room area, maybe, maybe that storage and laundry's in the middle, with two locker rooms on either side of it.
Um, to answer one of your questions, too, James and Robin, you asked about three courts, your standard basketball court is about 84 by 50, and your volleyball courts run 60 by 30, so if you have two parallel basketball courts, your volleyball courts will fit inside there with 10 feet, and therein lies your answer.
Okay.
Cost-wise, I had a comment on their cost, you know, if you, simple math here, 275,000 divided by 1,258 is about $220 a square foot, to move a wall, my understanding, is out eight feet, six inches, that cost seems to be huge to me, you know, when, it seems to me you're simply adding some concrete, and I know it's probably not that simple, but...
It's kind of, it's a floor and a roof.
That number seems really high, I mean, I know things add up more quickly than...
But it seems inflated.
It seemed high.
Actually, you've got a floor and a roof and two eight-foot, six-inch pieces of walls all you're adding to the cost of it.
Exactly, yeah, you're not, the finishings aren't changing substantially.
So I don't think it would run that much a square foot to add that on.
I agree, and...
I mean, just to do this, would their, their numbers seem...
But I think for the benefit of the school district and for the benefit of the community, there's a possibility if we can get two courts in there to have eight-team tournaments here, and it's going to generate some, not only revenue for the school by charging admission, but it's also going to have people spend some money in town.
And I, I would strongly support being able to not have our kids practicing at 6:00 in the morning if possible, you know, that would help double our practices, you know, if they can, two teams at a time practicing, that, I mean, that's...
I, I think that money could be raised to do that.
Well, and, so, you know, my, my thought or my opinion is that yes, that, that we approve it with the, the thought that, worst-case scenario, we now have $275,000 freed up, that would be backup plan, see, whatever, that you have two years of time before that money's needed, I would put the athletic department to task to work to raise, to raise that, you know, knowing that whatever. I would also have the, you know, the thoughts that, you know, I'm maybe a little naive to it, but optimistic that the bids, you know, like I said, that, that number of 200 and whatever plus dollars a square foot seems high to me, like, I agree with you, Jim, that if we were to cut something out, and two months down the road, our bids come in a half a million or a million dollars under, we can't add it at that time, we're, we're out of luck at that time.
That's right.
And would be greatly kicking ourselves. We've built in a number of other alternative bid items for other things, and I know that we've got other items that are easy, you know, that, that will work towards raising for donations for...
Plus, we're going to get our deposit back from our land.
Well, that's part of the 275,000.
That's what I mean, I, I view that now as, we can't afford to purchase property, the other properties that are, we can't afford those, they, they were substantially more expensive than the property that we were pursuing, so we have, that, that option is off the table for now.
Yep.
So that money sits in the bank until we do have an option, and I would, I would consider it an emergency reserve for something like this, should we need it in the future.
And that was Lorraine's thought, too, she said, don't get about, let them get out there tonight without, she said, we're going to kick ourselves in the butt if we don't add it on now.
But I think they still have a ways to go before we can say...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I'm not ready to make a motion in the first...
No, we can't approve it, yeah, but we can get, get BLDD to work on that scenario.
Have them get it right.
This week, can that be worked on, can you guys work towards something, maybe with her, that for next week?
Hopefully by next Monday, we could, yes, they understand that we need to wrap this up sooner than later to get all the stuff out to bid, so, I, I would think that a phone call to, to Gene tomorrow to say, here's what we want, work on this for next Monday, that we could get something back quickly.
And, you know, a lot of the interior finishings and orientations and things can be developed as we go to some extent, but the footprint is, you know, the early bid stuff is our priority at this time.
The footings and floors and...
I guess if we alternative bid flooring and lighting and everything else so that we can get the square footage, right, then that's, so we can build the square footage that we need.
And I'm not willing to make any cuts in the education part or anywhere else to do this, if, if this, to get it right, needs to be privately fundraised or donated, then I guess we have a year and a half to two years to raise that money. Because the final payments on this project won't be made until when, Terry, probably December of '16? If we move in in August of '16, it'll take several months before we finish all the checklists.
I think they, yeah, but they're so small there at the end, I think she had her cash flow ending pretty close to like the September timeframe.
Okay, so...
Like maybe a month after.
That gives the timeframe to raise the money.
Well, it also gives us time for gifts and kind.
Yep.
Also, you know, we've got this gym, now if we get here and we all help with whatever the public can help with, to save us from hiring somebody to do it with things like cleanup and things like that.
Which is no different than what Independence did.
I don't want to be a crepe hanger, but I, I talked to Dr. Cox about this this morning, I'm very concerned about, as late as it's got into the year, that all the good contractors have got their work lined up for this summer, and that we're going to have trouble getting a reasonable bid. These guys aren't going to sit back and wait for us, because we haven't approved it yet.
I know, but I've talked to a couple of them, and they're waiting for us to get this done because they want to bid.
I, I just can't believe that they, I mean, I talked to a couple of guys that did this for a living, you know, that bid these for contract, and he said, most good contractors got their work lined up by first of the year for the next summer, and I can't believe you guys are sitting here waiting, anticipating, hopefully we do something, you know, I'm sure we're going to do something, but I'm hoping they're not just sitting there waiting, hopefully, you know, but that's just a thought I had that I think we should think about, because we might, they might not be as aggressive of, of bidding for us.
The date I had seen was April 14th-ish, that they had planned that.
Of course, this warm weather's changed our mind on a lot of things, because it's changed a lot quicker.
It's too early to plant, Jim.
Well, it ain't too far.
Still frost in the ground. Do we have a, need to make a motion, or are we just going to sit on this and wait? Please advise them to try and get as much done as they can in the next week, we'd like to wrap this up and move forward with further documents, so we can go to bid.
Yeah, I'd like to see...
And then, once we go to bid, you'll know for sure how much money you need to try to raise, Mr. Forsythe, and go out and ask the community for it. Better start putting some plugs in, I guess.
Yes.
No, I, I agree, too, that we need to direct them to get, hold a BLD and get them working on it, so we have some results by next week.
And I did mention that you guys had taped off the area and, and did a little walkthrough, and that was, that was good, that was...
What, outside?
No, the...
Taped off in the cafeteria, but it's actually seven foot short now, if you had that stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Scott is here. I see Scott Scheller from Estes is here, we'll move back to agenda item four, if you want to approach the mic.
Who are we going to move the lot to, is it 13?
He didn't. Oh, yeah, what were we doing?
Were we doing 13?
No, I didn't.
Okay, okay. What were we doing, 13 before, before Todd left, or was he...
Oh.
I'll just step off first.
Okay. He'll grab, Todd, go ahead, floor is yours.
Well, Dr. Cox asked me to come and visit with the board for a few minutes, some of the work that Estes and BLDD have been doing over the last several weeks has been to bring design into focus and bring costs into focus in, in sync, we've, we've made some pretty good progress in those, an update for the board, we were able to get the area development group to grant us free use of soils from a stockpile they have, so there, there, we'll still have to haul them and place them and do all those things, but the, but the cost of those materials were in the budgets that we talked about the last time, and so there, that's, that's a savings item. There are some other ones that we've been working pretty hard on, one of those is, relates to the design and the soils investigation on the site. Originally, there was a soils report done, obviously, and by doing those borings, they're able to determine fairly closely generally what the makeup of the soils are, but they don't go to the extent of actually taking those soils to the lab and doing final testing on them to determine exactly what they're capable of. So, in the budgets that we have been working with, there's a significant amount of soils under the footprints of the buildings that currently, in the soils investigation reports, are deemed soils that hopefully would be usable in areas outside the buildings, but that can't be determined for sure without some more investigation and without completing that testing. So, Estes and BLDD worked together, we've, we've done two things, we got a proposal from Chosen Valley Testing, the ones that did the initial investigation, to provide us a tech for a day, and to supervise and, and actually be able to view those soils as they're coming out as well, a number of just very shallow test holes, three, four, five feet deep test holes, where we will do, be doing the construction, under all three of the new main components of the building, and then in a, in an area in the stockpile that we're talking about borrowing and bringing in, and we have a, that cost, I believe was $1,850 was their proposal to us, and we have an excavator lined up that would bring an individual and a machine, deliver it, take it home, and work all day long with us doing those things for $1,200. And Estes would be, I would be the guy on site with all of those people all day, and would supervise the, the operation, expedite the testing, get the reporting from Chosen Valley, and report back to the board, and there would be no cost. And there would be no cost for Estes. We would be doing that as a part of the effort to reduce costs and help make sure that we're getting value for the, for the board and for Charles City. These costs, I think, are, A, they're reasonable, B, they will be incurred at some point, no matter what, because as a part of the construction, many times, these costs are incorporated in the testing for the building before the soils engineer will allow us to begin foundations and things like that. So, we're jumping the gun a little bit, but the, but the hope is, if we can confirm what we hope to be true, a number of, not a number, a few thousand yards of soils that would otherwise be considered waste will be able to be used on-site, and that will, that same few thousand will be yards that we won't have to put in a truck and haul in from the stockpile to replace them. That, that's the effort we're talking about, and, and we're basically asking the school board to approve those expenses as a reimbursable expense. We will obviously bring, bring invoices and documentation for the exact cost to the board for, for the reimbursement.
Ballpark figure of the several thousands of yards of potential fill that would remain on-site that we wouldn't have to, I mean, what kind of, we spent three thousand dollars of stuff to, which you said, I understand we would have incurred anyways.
The return could be on the magnitude of ten times or more.
Ten times or more. That's kinda what I thought.
Yeah.
Makes sense?
Makes sense. I think we need to go ahead and approve having them do these tests, because like you say, you're gonna have to do them sometime before we put any foundations in the ground, we're gonna have to have them done, so.
Ultimately, they will be a part of the cost of the project, it's just a matter of timing.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve letting Chosen Valley go ahead and do their testing. I guess maybe, one question I'd have is, how quick are you gonna get at this, next week?
Well, we may.
How quick before we get a response?
With the, with the weather that you brought me this week, we might be able to. We didn't wanna try to do it when frost was still in the ground, because the machine we'll be using won't be a really large machine, but if the ground is really soft, it will really make a mess. So, what we're seeing is, the frost has gone out rapidly, and it's gonna get cooler in the next few days, but it's still gonna be dry. So, if it's, if we can get in and get out without making a mess of things, yes, we'll be moving very quickly. I would really, I would really like to have the answers by the end of the month.
Sooner than later.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to proceed with Chosen Valley to perform the work as outlined by Estes Construction. Any further discussion by the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried forward to zero. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Now, we'll move back to alumni activity pass fee.
Which number was that?
Number thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay. There wasn't anything in our packet on this.
We have, I get bombarded all the time from parents of college kids, and college kids who say they can't afford to come to events, and Booster Club members that said, "What can we do about this?" Kids come home for the summer, they wanna come to high school athletic events. I think one of the things we really wanna do is build a strong foundation with our alumni. I think they come back the most, the first year out of high school, when their first year in college. I think there's a revenue base there that could also help the athletic department. Most kids in college aren't gonna pay sixty-seven dollars for a year-long activity pass. This was a way, maybe, to encourage them to come back, but also financially help them come back. So, I threw some numbers out there that maybe, maybe for twenty dollars, they can get into ten events, maybe that's, maybe we should charge thirty, maybe there should be seven events. I'm just throwing out there, I just threw out some numbers as a suggestion. I think parents would appreciate it. I think it would be a great high school graduation present. I would want to sell them prior to graduation, so they would use their lunch tickets, so their picture would be on it. Our scanning devices can shut off after ten uses, so they couldn't pass, if they bought it, they couldn't give it to someone else, 'cause their picture's on it. Just, I, just a way to build some alumni tradition back into our high school.
Would it be just one year that they're eligible for that?
Yeah, they'd only be eligible their freshman year in college, and I think that's when we get most of the college kids back, is that freshman year. Homecoming is big that freshman year. The first summer home from college is a big summer for them. After that, you see a lot of kids not come back or start getting into their careers, internships away from home. So, just wanna keep in, a nice base with those freshmen in college.
Like, so many of them still have younger siblings competing in events that.
That's true, that's another.
A great opportunity for them to come back and see their, you know, siblings.
Right. And they competed with it, a lot of those kids were teammates, you know, so they have some strong relationships with some kids that are still in high school, so I think it helps them sustain those relationships.
Do you possibly offer levels? Or would it be too confusing?
Haven't thought about that.
Because if you, if, well, it's what Jason just said, if you have a sibling in a sport, you may be, have a tendency to go to more than you would.
If you're going to UNI and it's a.
Or if you went to state with one of the teams, you may have a tendency to go to more than you would normally.
More. I mean, they could always buy an adult activity pass for sixty-seven dollars.
True.
Which would get him into everything.
It's just you had mentioned, you know, ten.
Ten events, I mean, if they come home for a couple football games, they come home over Christmas and see one or two, and maybe in the summer, you know what I mean? Summer is probably the biggest thing with baseball and softball, 'cause there are so many events.
Well, then Thanksgiving time also, and then, then their spring breaks don't coordinate with ours, so.
Not yet.
No, so there might be some activities there, too.
Yet.
I just wondered if ten would be enough, maybe it should be fifteen for the twenty bucks and.
Ten for the twenty dollars is probably.
I mean, that's a pretty good deal for them.
That's very good.
And if they go to twelve or fifteen events, they can pay an additional five-dollar adult fee, which isn't tremendous, but I, I do wanna make sure that it's only on sale through graduation, they take their lunch tickets with them the last day, boom, it's over. If they come back in September and wanna buy a pass, it's not gonna be available.
Then I think what I'd like to see is just come back in the fall and let us know how many is sold.
Yeah, it'll be.
Come back at the June meeting and let us know how many is sold, 'cause it'll be done by June one.
Right.
So, April first to May twenty-second.
Yeah.
Basically.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and approve Todd's recommendation that we go ten passes for twenty dollars and have them sold by the end of the graduation time.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So, the advantage, I see a couple advantages here. There's no cost to us, because you're gonna use their lunch tickets. All you gotta do is program it in the computer for the scanners, right?
Correct.
We don't have to print extra tickets that have barcodes or anything on it.
Nope.
The other question I had was, if I'm currently a senior student and I have a thirty-seven-dollar student pass, is that good for baseball and softball this summer?
That is good through August first. These passes that we sold.
Last fall.
These passes that we sold right now through June first would only begin to be usable after August first.
After August first. And you can program that into the readers.
Yep.
Based upon their lunch barcode, right?
Yep.
Okay. That answers my question. Anything else from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried forward to zero. Thank you, Mr. Forsythe. Now, moving back to Agenda Item Eight, Five Hundred North Grand Revitalization Team. Dr. Cox and Director Walker have been attending those meetings this winter, and they have an update.
Yeah, I think the, the intentions are a little misstated on the agenda. First of all, they know action, but then primarily, my intention was to give an update on some meetings we've had about the pool. Last week, I can't remember the date, maybe Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday, whenever it was the day that you had gotten back from your trip.
Thursday.
Thursday, was it Thursday?
Yeah.
We had our first meeting. Attendees included the city administrator, the mayor, the park and recs director, the park board chairman, myself, Jerry Mitchell was there, and representatives from the Y, Lance, and one of their board members. So, representatives from the city, the Y, and the school. We started the discussion about the pool, you know, where, where we're at with the conversation that we've had at the table about budget cuts and what we may be facing and, and where the pool, you know, cost of the pool lies with that. Several things have kinda come out, you know, we had great discussion. We all kind of agreed, there's two, two aspects to this, a short-term question or aspect, and a long-term one. The short-term, of course, is, is very specific to the district and our budget and how we're gonna move forward specifically even just next year with our budget, and if we can afford to, at what level can we afford to operate the pool? And, but long-term, the, the discussion focused a lot on the community needs for the pool and the indoor pool and the services that, that the community gets, or the, the opportunities that the community has by the pool being available here. We met again this morning for the second meeting. Great discussion again. What I would, you know, my update would be is that there's been several different things kind of discussed, options, you know, such as cost-saving measures in the short term, whereas potentially working with the city on if we were to drain the pool for a period of months, getting free or reduced water to refill it when, when it came time to do such. The Y talked about possibly adding some fees to their swim team program to help generate some revenue to sustain the pool or support some of the cost of operating the pool. Additionally, Lance from the Y talked about, referenced a fundraiser for the Charles City Matt Club Wrestling Program, and that they had sold cookie dough and raised like thirteen thousand dollars. So, he was going to discuss that with his staff about a potential, the potential for a fundraiser, a joint fundraiser between the Y swim team and our high school girls' swim team. If they could do, sell a product or do something to generate more funds, that would, would go a long ways in helping our short-term discussion. I relayed the message that, you know, we're, our budget pieces are continuing to fall into place. We've got the support staff early retirement deadline this week, we've got some job postings, some different things that hopefully we get some answers to, maybe by next week, as early as next week. That will give us a much more clear picture on our budget and where we're at for next year, which will greatly influence our decision on how we move forward with the pool. Long-term, we had a lot of discussion about what role this pool may play in the community in the future, what role all of the pools in the community play in the future, whether it be Lions Field or the Y's pool as well. It's very clear that they all three serve three separate groups of people. Ours is a great competition pool, the Y's is a great exercise, arthritis class-type pool, and the Lions Field, of course, is outdoors and zero-depth entry, so they all three currently serve a different purpose. They all three have different things about them that may be limiting factors moving forward, whether it's age, needs for repairs, location, several different things there that we're all kind of discussing and, and kind of working through some options or ideas. I would say that discussion's kind of, you know, the beginning end of, the beginning part of that to where we're really working to see, assess where we're at for next year, but in the meantime, continuing this discussion for either developing a five-year plan for the community or a ten-year plan for the community, deciding what role each of the pools plays in that plan, and then hopefully making some educated decisions going forward on what we'll be doing with, with that and where they fit, so. That's kind of, like I said, we've met twice, very good discussion, very productive discussion on that. We intend to meet again after next week when we have more budget information on our end of it. I guess one of the thing, the, there was even discussion like, you know, we have some anticipated costs, like new lifts, you know, we were not, currently not in compliance with ADA requirements for chair lifts in our pool, and Jerry had estimated a cost that we need to provide two of those. The city kinda mentioned that, you know, they have one coming for their pool. It may potentially be movable, so it could maybe serve this pool while this one's operational, and also serve that pool while it's operational, two different seasons. There was kind of some discussion on those types of things that would hopefully bridge that gap, you know? I, I hope that our budget situation becomes the fact that we, we can start to, to bridge that gap and, and either limp by until we get this, the, the longer-term plan developed and make a better decision about the long-term future of the pools in general in the community, so. That was my intention of this agenda item. I'd certainly take questions on what we, any other discussion we had at the pool meetings. Thoughts, questions, anything?
Well, I appreciate all the work you did on it, Jason, and, and, you know, this pool thing is, has stirred more controversy in the community than any other project that we've talked about since I've been on the board, so it's, seems to be some concern that's important.
I agree, you know, we've, we've got, certainly, I think I'm up to, I don't know, a dozen or fifteen emails, you know, on the pool stuff, which is great, you know, it's, it's great that we have a, you know, a facility like that that generates that kind of public support. It's, it's, it's a great facility, and, you know, and I've, I've said all along that we've been really fortunate for forty-plus years to have that facility and that the school district has been able to provide the community with that opportunity. Obviously, there's great interest to continue that, and I hope that our budget allows for it when we get a little deeper into that next week, so.
I have, I've gotten more emails on the pool issue than any other.
Yep.
But as a side note to that, out of the dozen emails that I've sent, nine of them, nine of them have been from Y members. The other three have been from people that aren't even part of our community, that are just aquatics directors.
Okay.
Interested in, in putting the support towards keeping our pool. So, I think we're headed in the right direction by looking at this as a collaboration between the entities that are.
I, I really think the other entities, I mean, you know, they, they may not be standing there with big open pocketbooks, but the conversation of addressing this stuff long-term is a huge step for the community in general. You know, that, looking at some of the surrounding communities, you know, they referenced Osage, of course, with their new facility, and the city of Osage there has bought into that facility significantly and, and provide a lot of funding every year to operate that facility. You know, the, with a new facility in North Springs coming up, you know, that, that may or may not be a competition to anything we currently have, and how will that, you know, play into the future here with, with operation of, of the aquatics in our, in our community, so. It, it really is good discussion, it's good, you know, good progress, in my opinion.
I haven't taken the time, like Robin, to count the emails and where they came from or what they're referenced, but I would say more than not, they mentioned the fact that they'd like us to keep the pool open for the YMCA competitions that they participate in. So, you know, for us to continue that, it is very promising that the Y and the city have started the conversations of, what do we do with this for the long-term?
Yep.
Because very few of the contacts wanted me to keep the pool open for school activities, they were more for Y activities, so it's, it's time to have those conversations and, and make those bonds with those other groups in town.
We also asked Jerry for some further development of some numbers to, if, if we did drain the pool March first and filled it again August first, when we operated it for X number of months out of the year, what may be the cost associated with that? If, if there's some savings, what they are? Kind of going, also developing that, which would help in the picture, big picture of answering some of these questions. Hopefully, Jerry's able to come up with that, I assume you passed that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else on North Grand Revitalization? And I'm gonna let it slide, the, the pool is in the Five Hundred North Grand Revitalization long-term goals, so.
We're a sub, subcommittee.
Subcommittee, yes. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, then, review of the 2015-16 budget. Is that Mrs. O'Brien? Is that Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
I'm just gonna put my PowerPoint up. And Justin, is it, which button is it? Thank you. We have our new logo, you'll notice. First, before I get into some of what we need to decide with the budget, I gave you a copy of what the notice would be in the paper. This includes a lot of information that is based on formulas and number of students we have that the board doesn't change. That's mainly in the revenue area. But as far as the expenses go, after we negotiate and, and have our discussions on reductions, you know, we're gonna fine-tune our budget to, to an actual. The certified budget just needs to be more than our line item and then we're, we're fine. But this includes like projected salary increases, that sort of thing. So anyway, we'll move forward. The big decision that is out there, that makes doing the certified budget a lot more difficult this year is our supplemental state aid has not been set by the legislature. This was formally called allowable growth. But because we, it has not been set yet, we have to publish our budget or we should publish our budget using worst-case scenario, which for us would be a 0% SSA. We can always decrease our certified budget, but we cannot increase it once it's been published. So we're gonna, we need to publish it next week in order for the public to, to put notice in the paper and have our public hearing. For each additional 1% supplemental state aid, the property tax rate would increase 16 and a half percent. Right now, our rate is thirteen dollars and forty-six cents per thousand. And with some of the discretionary items I've included, at a 0% SSA rate, it would be thirteen eighty-six per thousand. And there'll be more information on that later, but...
Terry, was that state, was that statement correct? You said sixteen forty point five percent or is it sixteen point five cents? Okay, I see it says in print sixty cents, yeah. Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that...
The, the question I have, and maybe it's in here, yeah, it's on that slide, go ahead.
Can I ask, just before I go, what are the consequences if we don't certify our budget?
We have to.
It's just not an option.
There's not an option.
There's a penalty for us, unlike there's no penalty for the legislature for violating their own law.
So they can, we don't have any right?
No.
They're thirteen months behind already on...
Yeah.
And they're a month behind on 2017's budget.
The county auditor is looking for our budget so that they can know how to set and collect taxes.
The auditor and assessor need to know.
Yep, and by us not doing it, we're going to back up the process. The Senate is in favor of a 4% SSA and the House and Governor support a 1.25% SSA. But if a compromise isn't reached, then it's 0%.
I hadn't seen that. That, that's true, right?
Yes.
If they do not reach a compromise before they adjourn...
It'll be zero.
It'll be zero statewide.
Right.
And there is a possibility of that from what I was reading today.
Correct.
Yes.
It's not a...
We will need to approve our budget reductions for next year regardless of our SSA. Since the district lost forty-seven students, the SSA rate will determine how much we receive per student. But we're still going to get our budget amount based on less students. Right now, whether we receive 0% or 4% SSA, the district will be on a budget guarantee. That is property tax, all property tax. At a 0%, our budget guarantee is just slightly over four hundred and four thousand. At 1.25, it's almost two eighty-one. And 4%, it goes down to about just under eleven thousand, so...
Do you have slides with that?
I don't. I kind of thought of mentioning that later.
That was some of the information that I had tried to stress at the legislative, talking, speaking with legislators, that they're not just, not just education, it's property tax, you know.
Right.
Very heavy, you know, decisions on the, on the property, local property tax. They've, you know, publicly stated so strongly that their property tax reform is a, or relief is a number-one goal and yet they're passing it on to us.
Well, and several of them were quite adamant about, if you want to raise your property taxes locally to help your school, then go right ahead. But they're forcing us to.
Yes.
Okay, so what is, what kinds of decisions does our board need to make? The discretionary factors that I have included in the budget proposal include an income surtax increase of 1%. This would be collected as funding for our PEPAL, the dollar thirty-four. So instead of collecting a dollar thirty-four for our voted PEPAL, part of it would be collected through sur, income surtax. So, and, and if you recall, you might not, Matt Gillespie had made the comment that at least 1% needs to be through surtax. In our ballot language, combination of surtax and property tax does not mean zero and 100% property tax. The, the judicial branch has weighed in on that and said that it has to be at least 1%. So there's really two reasons for, for this. Then we need to discuss our general fund cash reserve levy and management fund levy, and I've got more information coming on that. As far as the general fund cash reserve levy, I did a comparison of last year to this year. And, you know, really, our special ed deficit, our increasing enrollment, which we won't have, and LEP, limited English proficient access costs and dropout prevention are pretty much the same as what they have been in prior year. Our difference really comes in, in whether we levy for cash reserve and for the budget guarantee. The two hundred and eighty thousand, almost two eighty-one, is using the 1.25% SSA. So that would change. But just as an example, in my mind, really, it comes down to the cash reserve levy. And in looking at our cash reserves, our cash balance has been declining. And I believe that in order to maintain it and also the cash reserve, which is part of our solvency ratio, it will be affected too if we can't keep our cash up. So there's multiple reasons, I believe, to levying for that extra hundred and fifty thousand. Then, as far as the management fund levy, three hundred and thirty-four, or three hundred and forty thousand is what I included in the budget. And that would pay for our insurance for property, workers' comp, unemployment and early retirement benefits that have been approved. Right now, we approved sixty thousand of teachers, for four teachers. And we've received one application for our support staff, which, you know, we will act on at the next meeting. But I believe the three hundred and forty thousand will be adequate to pay for those costs. There may even be a little extra in there to increase our cash within the management fund so that at the end of the year, our balance may go from two hundred and sixty-seven to almost three hundred thousand. So there might be a little bit of wiggle room to reduce that levy. And just so you can see, I've got the first two columns, the thirteen fourteen and the fourteen fifteen property tax. And then I have three columns showing three different supplemental state aids and what the result of those would be on property tax. So you can see at 0%, it would be three dol, or thirteen eighty-six and 1.25, thirteen sixty-five and 4%, thirteen twenty. Now, we will still need to approve or, using the worst-case scenario, publish it using 0%. So it could be if the legislator comes back with a 4%, it'll, it'll go down to thirteen twenty, which would actually be a decrease from our current property tax rate. The, the other two, those percent changes at the bottom, at 0%, it would be a 2.95% increase in property tax rate. At 1.25, it would be 1.41% increase. And at 4%, it would be 1.95% decrease. So what I need you to do is have that discussion so that at the next meeting, I can come back with the budget that you want me to publish or at least I can show you what that looks like. You can always change it next time, but I wouldn't have a clean copy of maybe what that would mean. So right now, I just want that input, you know, is the 1% surtax what you want? Increase, I should say, because right now, we have a 6% surtax rate, which is levied for the instructional support levy. This would be an additional 1% that would fund part of our PEPAL.
Which you said was highly recommended or potentially required.
Pretty much a requirement, isn't it?
Right, right. According to Matt, he said it needs to be 1%. And then the cash reserve levy, you know, really the discussion, like I said, comes down to the hundred and fifty thousand. Do you want to, you know, levy that hundred and fifty? I believe we need it if we're gonna, you know, maintain our solvency ratio. And then the management fund levy, the three hundred and forty thousand, is that, you know, what you want to levy for? Most of that is required based on already what we know or estimate for property tax and, and early retirement.
Terry, where does, where, where would we put in there if we was to, as I understand it, the spending authority that we've got, that's, we have, it's, them dollars are taxed, or could be put up for tax liability? Is that correct? We could ask for a tax to cover those?
I don't know if I'm following you.
Well, it's, we got the spending authority, but we don't really have the money. The state gives us the authority, but we don't have the money. So how do we recapture that? It's actually a deficit because it's not, it's not a money in our pocket. But we got the authority to do it, but how do you recapture that?
Well, that, that's really in the cash reserve levy is where that comes from. They'll give you the authority to spend certain things. You know, and it really goes back to, you know, we can levy the property tax for each of those, like the special ed deficit. But if we don't, you know, we have the authority to spend that, which is part of our, you know, unspent balance calculation. But we added the two, the budget guarantee and the cash reserve, just for solvency ratio purposes.
Okay, so that really wouldn't be, we wouldn't be gaining on that spending authority that's...
For, for the, the middle three, you know, we've always levied for that. So it, it, it's not a gain, but the gain would be in the cash reserve part of it. And since last year, we weren't on a budget guarantee, we didn't need that.
So the, the budget guarantee with this number is based upon 0% SSA?
No, 1.25. The, the bottom number, the two eighty, two hundred and eighty thousand, would change to four hundred and four thousand.
On 0% SSA?
On 0%.
Which is what?
Which is...
Which you probably need to be doing?
Which is what is in this proposal.
So you're, in that proposal, then you're showing the budget guarantee is four hundred and forty thousand because we're, we're showing zero state aid, supplemental state aid.
Right.
I had a couple of comments, I guess so. One, I think this very well illustrates the need or what we have tried to educate our community on to how these types of things, how the legislature, their decisions that they make affect them locally, whether you have kids in school or not. You can see very quickly, every 1% is sixteen and a half cents on your property taxes. If I were a homeowner, I don't, no matter how old or no kids or whatever, I think that's a good incentive to contact your, your legislator and, and express your concerns about your property taxes and how it relates to these decisions. Two, the number down, you know, here with worst-case scenario, thirteen eighty-five, I believe this year, the statewide average was about fourteen fifty-five. So even worst-case scenario, I think we're really fortunate to be well below the statewide average on, on our, on our levy here. So I think those two things stand out to me as being really, really promising. Knowing that the last two years, we've had to make aggressive decisions with the management fund to shore up our general fund, which directly impacts our, the levy there. Hopefully, we can get out of that cycle. We can get back to some better budgets and enrollment and that would continue to provide relief to that number if we didn't have to continue to offer early retirement packages, so. I, I think this is great, Terry, I think you did a fantastic job.
Last question on line seventeen, general long-term debt proceeds. You have seven point three million?
Seventeen, seven, yeah.
That would be the expected.
General.
Is that what we're expecting to borrow?
I'm sorry, Scott, which, where, where are you looking?
Line seventeen on the document.
Okay.
General long-term debt proceeds.
Right. Okay, so that would be the 2015... Okay, so that would be the 2015 debt issuance.
I thought we were looking at closer to 8.3.
No.
No? Okay.
No, this is, according to Matt, the maximum amount that we could levy, based on his formulas for coverage and, you know, what our anticipated revenues are gonna be.
Oh, so to make up the difference, we were going to use cash?
Correct.
And to be clear, that has no effect on the budget?
No, no, it's just part of the...
There's no impact?
There's no impact on property taxes.
Correct.
It's part of what we'll, what we will be publishing
Correct, yep.
In the newspaper that people will see and say, "Oh, really?"
Yep, because we have, those debt proceeds, we'll have that money to spend on the expense side then.
Right.
So we're gonna, down below, you can see under the facilities acquisition and construction, there's 18 million penciled in there. So that's spending what's remaining of our 10 million, and the 7 million, and then spending cash at the end.
And another million, okay. Do you have something to add?
Well, I just wanted to, I just, excuse me, I didn't mean to yell, but to make a comment, Lorraine and I are on the negotiations committee, and we've, and we've met with the teachers and the support staff. And since you guys have been to Des Moines, I didn't go, but Lorraine and I talked about it, and she said it looked to her like the legislator's telling us, you know, "We're not gonna give you the 4% because you're, you're passing it all out to your teaching staff, and, and we're gonna make you guys get a little crunchier on your own budget to quit giving out the total 4%." But anyway, what I want, what the point I'm trying to make is, I think that you people need to talk to Dr. Cox between now and Wednesday night, and let us know how we wanna participate in Wednesday night's closed sessions again. We have another, we made him an offer, in fact, they come to us, the support staff come to us and ask us how's come, we've never offered them a retirement program. And so, we kinda had that meeting then, two weeks ago today, I think it was, that we met that morning and approved quickly, and, and got, we got one offer so far. But I think we need to get some figures of what you guys think that Lorraine and I and Dr. Cox need to be sticking with our guns, or on Wednesday night's negotiation session, again, that'll be our closed session, and then Terry's got, if that don't work out, I think you've got a schedule already for mediation, is that correctly? Okay.
We can certainly contact Dr. Cox.
Yeah, I don't wanna talk about that here in public, but wish you'd get some information from him.
Could have an exempt session following this board meeting as well.
Yeah.
Doesn't require public?
Nope.
Okay, we might do that.
Okay, thank you.
So, anything else you...
Well, really...
This is an informational exhibit.
I, I want...
You're looking for what?
Consensus, is this budget, the way I've given it to you, what you want me to bring back next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I think it looks great.
It follows along with everything I believe we've talked about over the last six months or more.
And I like that it's worst-case scenario.
Yep.
You know, that's unfortunate.
Unfortunately, yeah, we have to do that, because we have uncertainties to deal with.
Yeah, absolutely. It's gonna get better.
And again, it's because the legislature is, what? 14 months behind in following their own law?
Yep.
To give us the SSA percentage for the upcoming fiscal year?
Yeah, on 15, 16, and they're already 45 days behind on the 17.
Yeah, yeah, they're two months behind on our 17 budget, and they're 14 months behind on 16.
But I, I gotta echo Jason's thoughts too, that I think we need to present the worst-case scenario. I don't think we have a choice to do anything but that.
Nope.
No.
So...
Thank you, Chair.
That believes consensus to move forward.
Yep.
Agenda item 10, at the board table, the promise and pitfalls of superintendent evaluation.
I'm gonna need two minutes to get this hooked up over there.
Take a two-minute break.
Is this going to be a 30-minute conversation like the last time we had one, or not?
Every conversation is dependent on how long you choose to make it go.
Okay, so let's take a five-minute recess before we proceed with this conversation.
Need some help, Scott? Were you on the very end, or were you around the corner on the side?
We were almost directly behind the basket.
Behind the basket, okay, that's what I thought, that's right.
Yep, and not on the side at all, almost, I mean, yeah. But it was row 11, like seat 13 through, 9 through 13, I guess, so my, my son, my daughter-in-law and Mark and I went.
Okay, and how'd you guys get tickets?
Actually, we just lucked into them.
Did you? That's the same with us, yeah.
Our, our son was planning on going.
Yep.
He's an Iowa State grad, and he was planning on going with friends. Well, his friends backed out, like at the, on Wednesday.
Oh, wow, okay. You hadn't mentioned, I saw in your email then, that you were heading.
And, and, I mean, they called and said, "Well, do you wanna go?" And we had, I had already planned on taking vacation Thursday and Friday. Anyway, we were gonna go biking.
Oh.
And we hadn't made reservations, so it was like, yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I always wanted to do this.
Oh, it was so much fun. Where did you stay?
Um, the Holiday Inn Express. It, it's like four miles away, so we couldn't walk. We took a cab, and then two nights Greg drove and found parking spots, so.
We lucked into, well, tickets, friends from back home had, well, of course, overall we did, but the tickets to get the door, we, you know, had those really high in the corner ones, and friends from back home, the daughter and the mother had both put in for the drawing through the seat, ticket holders thing, they ended up with both getting drawn and having four tickets, they ended up with four extras.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, so then, they had talked to my mother-in-law and said, "You guys, I know you're going, do you want, you know?" So, yeah, we, yeah, we wanted them.
So you were gonna go, but just go to the square?
Well, yeah, we were gonna either buy scalps and tickets outside or something, yeah. We had planned it ahead of time to be, you know, we took the kids, you know, we went to Legoland and the aquarium, we did all that stuff. We thought, you know, if we can get tickets down there, great, if not, you know, no big deal, then we lucked into those tickets and whatever. I had made a long, you know, a long time ago, I had made reservations at the Sheraton at Crown Center, which is just up the road from the Sprint Center, so we were able to walk, they had a great shuttle, but we were able to walk one or two times too, it was less than a mile.
Yeah.
And it was fun, there was several, the Oklahoma team, Kansas State team, they were staying in our hotel.
Oh, really?
The hotel connected to us, had TCU and Oklahoma State, so those teams there, so their players were just milling around, the coaches, you know, I met the coaches from those teams, I mean, it was such an experience, I mean, it was, it was just a blast. And, you know, and then, of course, the games were, even the Wednesday night games, we didn't have, you know, those games were fun.
That, that...
The Kansas State TCU.
We didn't go to the...
Texas Tech, yeah.
My daughter-in-law sold those beforehand, and was able to send them out. But we had to be down there Thursday to sell our early tickets.
Oh, the early, yeah, yeah, same with us, we didn't go to the early stage.
So we, we sold them to a scalper.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we ended up doing, was our extras.
Yeah.
What else you see?
But our extra time, we were at, went to the Boulevard, or the Boulevard Brewery Tour.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
I bet that was pretty close.
It was. They, they really incorporated Iowa into their tour, because we're like their third market behind Kansas City and St. Louis, it's like Iowa people buy their product.
They see a lot of that product around here.
Yeah.
That's right. Oh, yeah, we had a blast, I was just shocked.
They said the orange is really, really too bright to use.
That big courtyard area.
Oh. They got some orange ones too.
No, you've never done this before?
Not there, no. At Kemper Arena, where we had been there before, we'd never been to the Sprint Center spot.
Well, they don't need to see our legs.
It's farther, it's several miles from there, back to what I would call the east, I think, south of us, but, yeah, it's, it's not, it hasn't been there for a number of years either, but that's back 10-plus years ago.
Lorraine must have just decided to take off today, huh?
Nah, last...
But friends of ours, my wife's...
Yeah, 'cause she called me about 5 o'clock, said she was just about in Wisconsinville.
Oh, wow.
My family is very large donors to Iowa, Iowa City, like huge donor. So they had, I would say, eight tickets, center court, right down low, three rows up, so we sat with them Wednesday night, and Thursday, they texted my wife, said, "We're in this private party, you know, coming..."
Preach, yeah?
No, I was in...
Boy, you're pretty, part of the snobby crowd.
Yeah, this private, private party, all of a sudden, inside the big crowd, inside the big crowd in the courtyard, there was a gated off area.
We managed to miss it.
Oh, boy.
You know what, no, it might have been 4:30.
So it was equally as crowded as out there.
We came in, North Grand, we took the Floyd back road.
Oh, sure.
So you didn't have to go somewhere.
We're not sitting there, but people were dressed up.
Oh, my God.
Their family, yeah. They're going to a burial, maybe they had the funeral in the afternoon, or they're going to a wedding, but why, I kid you not, 30 cars at least, head north out of town.
Saturday night, Floyd Party Department had their steak fry at Sale Yard, North of Floyd. So that might have been one of the...
It was almost a steady streak of people.
Does my seatbelt man?
Yeah, I guess over at 5:30 too.
Okay, ready?
You know, I felt lucky to be where I was.
They were probably going to steak fry.
You should just go down to the bottom, the worst case, worst case is they get you out.
They boot ya, I know, we talked about it.
Terry, you didn't give me my gavel, so, I'll just use my arm.
Okay, sorry.
We're back in session at...
We did talk about that.
We're ready, Dr. Cox.
All right, so we are going to take part in a school board team development discussion tool from the Iowa Association of School Boards, titled "The Promise and Pitfalls of Superintendent Evaluation." You each have a script, and we will get to that in just a second here. So superintendent evaluation, I know this is bad practice, but I'll, I'll read to you from the PowerPoint that was provided by IASB, that is protected, password protected, so I couldn't go in to edit it down or highlight anything, I just had to use it exactly as they presented it. So one of the most important responsibilities of a school board is the fair and formative evaluation of the superintendent. This is a responsibility that holds great promise for school boards. If the board keeps the superintendent's role as a system leader in mind, and is clear on how the superintendent, like the system, can constantly grow and improve, wonderful things can and do happen. So, this discussion guide is divided into two parts. There's a participation part with all of you in the first area, and then, we're gonna go through some basic principles of superintendent evaluation to help ensure the board's effectiveness as well as that of the superintendent. So, part one, we're gonna begin by reading through a scenario. Now, remember that this is not our school board. This is Dreamfield. Dreamfield is an imaginary school board, and as you read through the scenario, be on the lookout for pitfalls that the Dreamfield Board might be falling into as a school board. For example, one pitfall could be failing to obey the law. Okay, are you ready? As the board meeting opens, the Dreamfield Board President, Sarah Smart, notes that superintendent evaluation is on the agenda. The board president asks the superintendent if he would like the evaluation to be in closed session. He says, "Yes." The Dreamfield Board then moves into closed session. The board president states...
We are here to evaluate the performance of superintendent...
I just want to say upfront, I think this is silly. What do I know about what a superintendent should be doing? I'm a painter, I can evaluate your home's surface treatments, but much of, but much of that stuff on this evaluation instrument is tough for me to understand. Let's just say, he is doing fine, ignore this instrument and go home.
Hey, wait, I have some questions here. I wanna talk about the superintendent's recommendations on the new building. That is something you can get into, Donna. Many of the recommendations seem pretty sketchy to me. Isn't that his job? Shouldn't his recommendations tell us which way to vote?
No, that is not his main job. His big, big job is to raise student achievement. It seems to me that we are making great progress there. That is why I give him all fives. Our kids are learning more under his leadership than the main, that's the main thing.
I sure don't say all fives. What if he does something down the road that we all regret, and we determine we need to fire him? How would all fives look to the lawyers at that time? I agree with Mr. Challenge, it was convenient on both people. His main job this year was the building project, and we were behind schedule. That sure doesn't merit fives.
Fire him? Where did that come from?
I'm just saying, no one's perfect, we need to be prepared. Remember how the last few years went with our previous superintendent?
While we are on that topic, our previous superintendent let the principals run their own schools, and a couple of them got out of hand. I want to talk about them and what the superintendent will be doing to get them back under control.
Now, may I just suggest that we go back to our old way of doing superintendent evaluations? I'll just collect all of your evaluations, and then privately, I will give the superintendent a quick summary.
Okay, so that was the Dreamfield Board.
I swear, they use Charles City in more of their scenarios than not, but okay, moving on.
So our first challenge is to identify at least three or four major pitfalls that this board might be slipping into. And as suggested, one of those pitfalls might be failure to obey the law. Talk about why these might be pitfalls. What is the Dreamfield Board doing that might impede its progress toward effective superintendent evaluation? So I'll give you a moment, or if you wanna think out loud, what are some of the things that you noticed as...
First off, the first thing I noticed is that they wanted to, they talked about wanting to do it in open session, and they said, "No," they finally decided to go into closed session to do it.
Okay, tell me a little bit more about that.
And I don't think that it's against the law to do it in open session, to discuss personnel or their evaluations, for the board to discuss it in public. It's gotta be in closed session.
Actually, it does not, and you're gonna do my mid-year evaluation in public here in just a few minutes. What the law does say is that you can go into closed session if there is a likelihood that someone's reputation likely would be damaged by having the evaluation done in public. But if there's no anticipation of that, then it should be held in public.
Okay, but how do you know that? Before you start, I mean, that's the pitfall.
You, yes, and you've hit upon something that we will talk about, that they did do something with that open session that was not correct. So, I'm gonna give you at least half credit on that one.
Okay, thank you.
One of the ways we're failing to, failing to obey the law is I am starting to talk about the principals.
Okay, so we've now drifted from the superintendent's evaluation to talking about what those darn principals are doing with their schools.
'Cause they got out of hand.
They got out of hand, according to Donna Dubius, the Dreamfield Board member. So there's two areas that we've talked about. What else did you notice through that scenario that were, possible areas where they're starting to slip into some big no-no's?
I thought, where they talked about his recommendations, tell us which way to vote. It's your job to give a professional opinion or professional recommendation, it's our way to independently vote on, as we represent our voters, our vote, you know, so.
Yep, so that would be something that they're slipping into. He should just tell us what to do every time, and then we just automatically say yes.
Meetings could last 23 minutes or less.
Yes.
Is there a problem? Is there a problem in the part where I announced that I gave you all fives?
No.
Because we were in closed session? That's, that's not a problem.
It, it wouldn't be a, a problem in open or closed session.
Okay, okay.
Now, if it were, I'll, I'll leave it at that, right now. We'll talk about that legal one here in just a second.
I question the last sentence, the collecting the evaluation and then privately giving them a quick summary.
Why do you question that?
Because who knows what that individual is relaying information? Because who knows what that individual is relaying information of whether they accurately represent my comments and statements.
It's the way we've been doing it for years, yeah.
There's no accountability in what is actually, there's nothing there to count.
So whose responsibility is superintendent evaluation?
The board.
All of us.
All five, rather than just one person. So that would be a pitfall that they are wanting to slip into. Were there any others? And you've noted three or four things, but anything else that came to mind as you either read your part or heard someone else as you followed along? And if you don't, that's fine, they've highlighted several that we'll talk about here. So, failure to obey the law was the first one that Jim hit upon. Now, here's the issue. The board did not secure the superintendent's written permission to post the evaluation as a closed session because the request has to be in writing. He can't just say to a board, "Hey, you know what? Let's go into closed session." And then it would have to be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance if you were going to do that. So that would be a failure to obey the law problem. As Robin mentioned, one of the board members said, "Hey, I want to start evaluating the performance of these principals, but that's not the agenda item." And as Scott read in the introductory comments for public comment, the board only can talk about things that are posted as agenda items, and principal evaluation is not one of them, and that would not be the board's responsibility anyway. And then lastly, you didn't talk about this, but there are standards that school administrators have to meet, the Iowa Standards for School Leaders. And you can't just ignore that and say, "Well, I like what he did with the building," or "I think student achievement is up," and some random thing. You do have to evaluate your superintendent according to the ISSL standards. Another pitfall, failure to identify clear goals and indicators of progress well in advance of the evaluation under which the superintendent will be evaluated. So you noticed through the scenario that different board members thought different things were important. How is the superintendent supposed to know what the board wants when collectively among the five members of the Dreamfield Board, it almost felt like there were five different directions that they wanted to go, and nothing had been put in writing ahead of time? So that would be.
You have five goals then, because each of us have our pet project or areas that we want you to participate in, as the Dreamfield Board.
And it, well, it could be that a Dreamfield Board or an actual Iowa School District Board of Education establishes five goals, but they would do that well in advance of the time to evaluate, not when you get to the evaluation and say, "Wait, I thought the building project was the most important." No, I thought student achievement was, and now there's no way for a superintendent to effectively be evaluated. The third pitfall, and no one hit upon this one, that's good, and that would be to assume that the evaluation is mainly just about extending or terminating the superintendent's contract. And you heard one person on the board say, "Well, I don't want to give him fives because what if we have to fire him at the end of the year or next year?" That won't look good if he got fives. The process should be about giving formative, which is frequent, and then summative evaluation so that both the board and the superintendent know, here are the target areas that are to be met, and progress can adequately be made toward that. And it isn't just about, do we give him another three years, or do we fire him and find a new superintendent? The fourth pitfall, delegating it to just one board member. And I think Jason referenced this, that, well, you shouldn't just give it to one person to do because he or she may not adequately represent what the whole board is thinking. And it is the responsibility of the board as a whole to do the superintendent's evaluation.
Well, I think like last year when we, everybody did an evaluation, and then they give them all to myself, and I summarized them all, really. I didn't evaluate them, I just summarized them. I told you there was four sevens and one five.
You just did the scoring.
Yeah, just scored.
To keep the scoring confidential.
Yeah, so we didn't, actually, the president didn't evaluate you, he just scored you.
But the president could have.
Could have, but he didn't.
Because the intent was for each board member to submit their evaluation based on that.
And I think that's what ours is, is to just have him score you and make a presentation so you don't have so much people to look at.
With the other board members present, so that if the document and the scores don't match with what everybody thinks it should have based upon what they did.
They can question.
Then they can question the person who did the math to come up with the score.
Okay.
So having discussed these pitfalls, what can we do well as a board to engage in effective superintendent evaluation? What should we resolve to do? What should you all resolve to do when you're conducting my evaluation? What kind of thought and preparation would that require? You know, for example, a principle might be, the board will review and abide by the law in relation to superintendent evaluation.
One of the things that I think we should, I think we have, is pretty much is at the time we renew your contract, we give you some goals to work on that we expect to happen. And then when we have our quarterly, we really discuss them, so it's not a whole year from now before you say, "Oh, God, I didn't know they wanted me to do that." At least every quarter, you've got the time to change your mind before the end of the year process, or to change your tactic. But I do think that we need to give you our top priorities, you know, maybe each one of us put one in the list so you've got something to gauge yourself by, what priorities we're expecting of you to do. That's what I think.
What other principles? And they've got some samples if you'd like to. Review and abide by the law would be a principle. Get clear on superintendent goals. So as Jim is saying, you each may have things that are important that you would develop with the superintendent as you establish what are the goals for the year. Getting clear process is important to validate that the board is united about what it will be evaluating. Get clear on those Iowa Standards for School Leaders, and you had that in your exhibits as well, it gave you the six standards. So make sure that you understand what those are and how they relate to what the goals are. Make the process, or the evaluation process, ongoing. As Jim mentioned, we do that. We typically have one in the fall, November-ish, in the winter, February or March, and then the summative one in June. So we've done it three times a year in the time that I've been here. This gives the superintendent an opportunity to make adjustments, corrections during the year, and it also decreases the likelihood of any surprises coming in June on the summary evaluation. Focus the evaluation. So here's what the goals are so that you know. Five, probably is too many goals. Three is good. Four is doable as well. Focus that so that you, as a board and as superintendent, what we're trying to achieve. Recognize professional knowledge. The board will recognize and use the superintendent's professional knowledge to enrich the evaluation dialogue, working together. Go back, look at the goals. Solicit my input on that as well and how best to achieve it. Give the direction that needs to be given from the board. Conclusion, obviously, the Dreamfield Board could have profited from discussing some of these principles, but any board, no matter how well they currently evaluate a superintendent, always can benefit from this kind of dialogue. So you can prevent a good deal of grief by keeping these principles in mind. And then they give you some links, and then that's it.
How many credits?
You just got three credits.
Thank you, that was going to be my next one.
Better Boardmanship Award for going through that.
And do those count as classroom credits?
I'll give you an update next Monday as to what your standing is, because that is important to know.
Some of us are delinquent in the classroom credits.
Oh.
That was good.
I've got a, here, let me hand out. I made a copy of the pitfalls.
Oh, great. See what we can remember.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
The individual career development plan, which would have looked like this. It was in the exhibit as well. And that's the document that we'll use for agenda item number eleven.
And so Jim asked, "How do you know if it's going to be something that would damage my reputation or not?" That's where trust comes into it as well. So if we were going to have some issues that warranted being in closed session and prior to tonight or prior to the June summative evaluation, you would communicate that to the board president who would say, "All right, I noticed this is an open session, but you might want to move this to closed and put in a written request for that so that we can address some areas of concern that are huge."
Personally, I think knowing the board members that are on this board, they would have notified you before now.
And that's how it should be.
That's how it's supposed to be. Wasn't that one of the points, that we are supposed to offer input for, to make corrections before just saying, "We're going to do disciplinary."
Yep.
Right. And I'm guessing the current board has no problems in contacting you about a wide variety of issues on any given day.
No.
Including Sundays.
Yep, and for the most part, that's fine, too.
Spring break Sundays.
The interesting, the interesting thing with the Red Oak, Red Oak Evaluation or whatever that was with their, was it principal, I think?
Yeah, high school principal.
Yeah, how the board wanted it to be in closed session, but he wanted it to be in open session, which I thought was an interesting thing.
Up to the individual being discussed, right?
That was actually.
Yeah, that's a whole.
Yeah.
That's another agenda.
It's a whole other discussion.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah.
So we, so trying to stay true to the agenda, shall we move on to number eleven? Mid-year superintendent evaluation.
So you have a copy of the Iowa Individual Administrator Professional Development Plan with the goal areas, and tonight really is your opportunity to assess progress on those goals as we move toward the summative evaluation in June. And again, as Jim had mentioned, typically this is done in closed session, but the real push from not only the Iowa Association of School Boards, but the court system too, would be that if there is no irreparable damage going to be done, then the superintendent evaluation and process then is more open, which is the opposite of what would take place with any other employee.
They really aren't aiding us in having shorter meetings, are they?
But is this, I guess I'm going to jump ahead of the next item on the agenda. Is this, is this normal, that now we're discussing midterm evaluations that at that time you discussed extending your contract already?
Well, you could wait until June 22nd, which is when the summative evaluation takes place.
Okay.
You know, if there is no extension on June 22nd, then eight days later, I'm unemployed. So I would start the job search process prior to June 22nd.
Right.
And that's why, if I need to do that, tonight is the night where you would say, you know, "I hear there's an opening in Urbandale."
Okay.
Versus, "We'd like having you here."
Okay, but just because we.
I'm not trying to be flippant, but that's really what the process is.
But because we extend your contract, we don't, because how we're done with negotiations, we don't have to set your wage.
No, this would just be your intent to say, "We want you to stick around at least for one more year."
Even if we dock your wages, would you stay? I mean, you committed to stay then?
That's another.
I mean, I just want to know.
Negotiations and wages are another agenda item.
That's item number twelve.
So, you know, I had looked through this a little bit, you know, I had some feedback or comments, and I assume that's the process here that we.
Right. Do you want me to read for the public what the three goal areas are?
Sure.
So we, the first goal area is to work with the Charles City Community School District staff and BLDD architects on Phase One plans. The second is to work with stakeholders on Vocational Skills Academy concept to increase student engagement. And the third is to work with school district staff on targeted professional learning opportunities to increase student engagement. Those were the three, and they hit upon all six of the ISSL standards, so, Jason?
So, you know, my feedback, I guess I would give is that, you know, the first one, working with the staff and the architects on Phase One plans, I think through this process, you've, one thing that even prior to when I was on the board, I think we had looked for more, maybe more professional recommendations, you know, that administration recommends this, based on your, because many times what we're looking at is stuff that we don't know about, and stuff that may affect some of these other things, especially the high academic achievement part. And if that truly is something that you feel is something that, you know, can guide us in a decision, not that we're all, like I said, in the scenario, not that we will always, you know, except we may have differences of opinions on things, but when it comes to your professional opinion on some of these things, especially with the, as we continue down the path of finalizing the plans, bids, that kind of stuff, I think you've greatly improved as we've moved along that process. I, you know, like that to continue, like to see, anytime that's appropriate, continue to give recommendations. Working with the stakeholders on the Vocational Skills Academy concept, you know, that's certainly in, there's been progress there. I think it's a little bit, it's still in its infancy stages, but I view that as a big priority for our district and as we move forward with this facility. I'd like to see that continue. I think, you know, you're on a great path there and great intentions, you know, in the conversations we've had. In the, working with the staff on targeted professional learning opportunities, I think that that's getting better, especially as we have looked at calendar options for next year and how we can work towards implementing more potential professional learning opportunities. I think that's a great positive in the work you've done to this point on that. Those would be my comments.
Thanks. Justin, can you grab my computer for me, too? Thanks.
I don't have to repeat that, do I?
No.
You got it all?
Yeah.
It's on the camera.
Anyone else?
Well said.
Yeah. The, I would agree that as we've moved forward with Phase One, everyone has maintained direct involvement, and you have led us quite well in those areas. I would agree with the Vocational Skills Academy, we're making progress in talking to those stakeholders and getting everyone involved and trying to make that happen. And our student engagement, professional learning opportunities, I guess I would say if anyone just follows you on Twitter, they know that you're actively engaged in working towards that, because that's what a lot of your tweets have to deal with.
Correct.
So, you know, even if no one did anything other than follow you on Twitter, they know you're actively engaged in these opportunities for our district.
I know, and some of the discussions I had had in, with a teacher in particular, is when we went to our learning studio, they were concerned about the project-based learning because they didn't understand the concept. Well, this was last year, and I had a discussion with them just recently, and they said, "No, I understand, and we're learning. I understand now that we're not going to be just shoved into this situation without the professional development we need to understand and to grow in this area," so it's a credit to that.
Anything to add, Jim?
Well, I could, but hopefully not. No, I get, you know, no, I echo everything that's been said, except I sometimes take it wrong, maybe you don't understand it quite properly, when everything that you recommend to us is on the best of, best of your knowledge and the best of your recommendations, but it says you recommend that we pass it, like we don't have a choice but to pass it. I'd like to see you just say, "I recommend going this way," and I recommend you pass this.
Tell me more about what you mean, because I'd.
Well, I mean, just a lot of things that come up, and you did the research on it, and you're the one that should make the decision on it, should give us the best possible choices. But then you say, "I recommend you pass this, this specific plan," you know, or whatever. And it makes it, to me, I think, well, he's telling us we need to pass this, there's no other choice. And maybe there is no other good choice.
But I don't recall, I think you're going to have to pull up some specifics, because if there's anything I think this board has done, is not always gone with your recommendations. At least not really, really well, of course.
Maybe I can't do it tonight, but I've seen times on the agenda where it said, "I recommend you pass this," or just leave out the word "pass," just recommend this.
Well, yes, the board recommendations, which we need to know.
Yeah, I know, and I appreciate his recommendation, because that's what he's for.
Well, and I know there's been a lot of public feedback to asking you to set forth your recommendations, because our constituents are very much used to that. They're very used to the superintendent giving that recommendation and the board just going with that recommendation. with that recommendation. So I know from the public's conversation they've had with me that they've made comment to Dr. Cox to really push that out there. I don't know as though I've ever heard the comment that you need to pass it this way. It's just recommendation. We get the final vote.
I know. But I've had people ask me, of course, I deal with a different type of people than you, I deal with farmers that use the co-op boards and whatever else, and they say, "Well, who's actually running that school up there? Is this a dictatorship or what? I mean, everything you pass is what he recommends." Well, they don't realize that.
I can really direct them back to some meetings that that was not the case.
But they need to go back to the beginning. You haven't approved everything yet.
No, they haven't, but they reread that in the paper, that he's recommending we pass this and we pass that when the agenda's presented. And I just, I have no objection to the way we're doing it.
The other thing to remember, though, is before things get to the agenda for action, we usually know what's coming up or what we're working on. If we have individual questions or problems, then we go in and talk to Dr. Cox about what we feel, what we think, what we're hearing, what we're seeing, and sometimes...
I did that this morning, because I...
Sometimes recommendations change, or sometimes, you know, it's like, "Oh, that's another area we need to consider," and then more research is done.
We just did that tonight with Jim.
Yep.
And I went in that talk to him this morning, because I told you, I was concerned, because I read into the, or into the agenda that was published, that we were acting on, starting to actually do the digging. And I said, "When will they let bids and do the digging?" And it was just for this people, those in Valley, to come and do some more testing.
Oh, the same way.
Yeah, you know, that's why I went in to see this morning. And I have some concern about that, and you told me, you explained to me the situation, and then I got, if you read the nice minute sheet here, it's a lot different, you know, I'm staying different, so...
And that's another big positive, in my opinion, is your accessibility when it comes to meeting these goals with us. I mean, you're rarely, you know, and I haven't experienced it, I guess, but I've never been put off by you, and, like I said, if I have a random thought, you know, I put it out there for feedback, and you're always good at responding, whether it's any of these goals, you know, the architect stuff, the vocational skills stuff, the whatever, any of that stuff, you're very accessible with that, and it is a, is a good way to make you more successful in achieving those goals, so I commend you on that.
Yeah, I've never, I've never had a time either when I went in to see that you've turned me away, you know, your wife's been...
We know how busy you are.
Yeah, and I hate to stay very long, but, you know, your wife's been obliging and took time to talk to me, so I appreciate that. And I'm just asking this question, I am, I'm not concerned about it, so it's just a question I wanted to ask.
Surprisingly enough, he answers email on Sundays.
Well, and you know, do what you could do, because now the board members are online, the board meetings are online. They don't have to just read the paper, because the paper can only give a short synopsis of what's happened. They can actually go in and click on and watch the board meeting to see the discussion that goes on, and sometimes the back and forth discussion that goes on.
On the internet.
A Charles City Pham, I think it is, isn't it?
Charles City Pan.
Pan, yeah.
And that's what Robyn's talking about.
Because I don't have Channel 4, but I can watch, I watch a lot.
So I'd encourage those individuals that are saying that to go back and forth and see you.
I'll give out that email address to several.
They wanna see some interesting discussions.
So step forward, learning goals.
Okay.
You wanna talk about those?
Yes. Continue finding exemplar schools and programs that match our vision. And so this is buildings and programs like the Phase 1, the 21st Century Learning Environments that we've been looking at and finally have drawn up, and then the Vocational Skills Academy, which really the Center for Advanced Professional Studies is, the CAPS model is the one that, is something that I'll be talking with Dr. Schultz and a NIAC cohort here in another two weeks. We're gonna talk about that to see if that would be the right fit for here. And if it isn't that, then there's a STEM Academy concept, too, that is being promoted that I think might be a good fit. So those are two of the more defined versions of what a Vocational Skills Academy might look like here for our students. And then the second learning goal was to learn more about project-based learning, variances between the Buck Institute, Iowa Big, and High Tech High, and we have been working as an administrative team on PBL and kind of how to roll that out over the next two years. And that's an ongoing conversation.
I think what is admirable here is, three years ago, I don't even know if any of these things were even on our horizon. And if it wasn't for...
Probably not.
...your efforts and your focus and your direction, we probably would, no, wouldn't even be considering these things, so excited about all of, very much so.
There keeps being more and more things that the state's mandating to us, too, like this reading program where they gotta be a certain level of time to get to third grade and things like that.
But that's even what's so wonderful about these, is these aren't, these are, these are things that we're, that, optional, that we're going above and beyond.
That's right.
Just to...
Provide a good environment. A better environment and a better learning opportunities for our students.
We want that farther, much, yeah, to be a model. The project-based learning is so very exciting, that I am excited to fast forward seven, eight years from now and to walk into the schools and see, yeah.
Anyway, I'm happy with what he's doing, I'd like to make a motion that we extend his contract.
Well, that's next...
This is on 12.
No.
We're on 11.
I thought we moved to 12.
No, we're still on 11. We were on step four of number 11.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got ahead of you.
So the next step for your evaluation process will be...
A summative evaluation in June, so in May, you know, make sure that you've got the electronic form or print copy, whichever you prefer. Maybe the print copy is easier to give to the president to kind of compile, synthesize all the comments. And then June 22nd would be the board meeting to do the evaluation.
And that's when we'll be up at the high school and the library again, yes?
No.
Is it June, July, and August?
June, July, and August.
I think it could be.
We meet in the high school.
Yeah.
With our conditioning?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so now we'll move on to agenda item 12. As a reminder, Dr. Cox's contract with the district and the board expires on June 30th of this summer. And the question is, what type of a timeframe for a contract would we like to offer the superintendent?
I would like to see us offer more than a year.
Yep.
We have projects that are, I would like to show our commitment, that we have a new school that's gonna open in 2016, and I would at least like to offer...
I'd like to offer him a two-year extension.
Two-year, yeah, I agree.
I agree.
How does that get worded, Terry, officially?
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, hold on.
I'd have to get the exact language, but the term of the contract would be 7-1 of 2015 through 6-30 of 2008.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So it's just written, a two-year term.
Basically, we would do a two-year contract. It's not called an extension or anything, it's just a two-year contract.
Well, it's a, it'll be a continuation, I believe, is the wording.
Well, if we say extended, that means we're gonna leave the salary alone, too, and we haven't decided that yet, so we're just continuing it.
Well, that's a later date.
So we're just continuing it.
We're not dealing, not, that's not on the agenda for tonight.
Because the contract itself, we're not approving, you're just approving the fact that the timeframe will be extended.
Right.
Right. The actual contract will come later.
Well, just one question. The two-year, does that lock us into, when we do discuss the financials and things, does that lock us into making that decision for two years at that time?
No.
Okay, so you can still revisit that?
You will revisit the salary part of it each year.
Each year.
Each year, he'll get a contract with an amount.
Okay.
And like, then next year, you can extend it for another two years, so then it, you know, you're always...
Well, we, you can...
Does that make sense?
Tonight, you can say, "We'd like to offer a two-year contract going through June of 2017."
Yep.
You can establish the 2015-16 and 16-17 rate later this year if you want, or you can just do the 2015-16 and then deal with the 2016-17 at a different time.
But we're essentially guaranteeing employment through 2017.
Right.
Yep, okay, no, I think that's excellent.
So now I'll remake the motion.
So Jim's made a motion to do, offer a two-year contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to offer the superintendent a two-year contract. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried, four to zero. Financials. Financial report for February of 2015. You have comments to make on that, Mrs. O'Brien?
I do. I'm just finding my notes here.
You're fine.
The general fund cash balance, you'll notice, was down 5.8% from last year, and we kind of talked about that being a reason for levying some cash reserve. In March, I will be closing out the class of 2014 activity account, and by board policy, that moves to the Student Improvement Assistance Team activity balance. Just as a note, that we issued 430 W-2s this year. You know, and that includes all your regular staff plus substitutes and, and then also, I'm working on a budget amendment for the current year budget that I will bring to the next meeting. So there's just one area in the student services area that we need to bump up so that we don't overspend in that area.
For the expenditure part?
Right.
Okay.
That's it.
Motion to approve the financial report for February 2015, as president.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the financial report for February of 2015. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero. Consideration of consent agenda, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, as president.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero. Important upcoming dates.
NHS tomorrow, board meeting next Monday, Jiving with Jazz on the 26th, prom in April on the 11th, and then Monday, April 13th, another board meeting.
When is there, isn't there a school board association meeting coming up sometime?
April 22nd.
Oh, so that'll definitely be on next...
Correct.
Okay, and that's in Dehampton, if I'm not mistaken?
Uh, yes.
Only pertains to Lorraine and I, but next Wednesday night with the 18th, we have negotiation meeting. So give to Dr. Cox on any of your thoughts.
Well, if you wanna do a quick...
I think we can do an exempt session here after we adjourn.
Five minutes.
So no other items come before the board, we will adjourn at 8:54 and go into an exempt session.